Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I will call to the order of the June 10th meeting of the Sling County Board of Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Grievous. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so in the flag salute and followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak. County government usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? And please state your name and address.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Rosemary Myss, Salina, Kansas. And the Granny Brigade would like to invite you and the public to a meeting which is going to be next week Tuesday, the 17th at 7:00 at the Friendship Center on 746 Comanche. And our guest speaker will be J.J. Carroll and he's a retired U.S. Border Patrol after 24 years as a deputy patrol agent in charge of the San Diego Sector. Mr. Carroll brings a different view on immigration and what is now transpiring on this forgotten, unknown place called the border. It's a very informative meeting. I've heard him speak. He's very passionate about his job and he had to retire because he couldn't take it anymore. So it is open to the public. Bring a friend and come and listen to J.J. speak next week, Tuesday evening at 7:00. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? At this time, we'll move to our consent agenda with consist of approval of tax rule adjustment, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, real fire District One board appointment. Are there any commissions who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move into the action items.
CDBG application with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning Commissioners. The Kansas Department of Commerce has released $9 million in community development block grant funds as part of the community facilities programs. Cities and counties may apply. The Sling County Department of Senior Services wishes to apply for funds to improve and upgrade the senior center. Specific improvements include parking lot expansion, parking lot service improvements, adding and improving sidewalks, and replacing the roof of the building. The staff is requesting that the attached documents be acted upon and signed to allow the application to go forward and be submitted on June 13th, 2025. The alternatives for action: Adopt the attached resolutions, pass the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, approve the contract for architectural services, and authorize the chair to sign documents necessary to apply for the CDBG funds or elect not to apply for the funding. The staff recommendation is, staff recommends that the commission adopt the attached resolutions, approve the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, approve the contract with A+ for architectural services, and authorize the chair to sign documents as necessary to complete the application. Documents included are: The resolution authorizing the application, resolution for operating and maintenance, the anti-displacement plan, contract for architectural services, disclosure report, statement of assurances, determination of level of review. The budget impact is the CGP funding will augment 200,000 in funds. The county has set aside for the project. The senior services office has also acquired grant funds of 15,000 and donations of 10,000 that are also dedicated to this project. The cost of the administration for this grant is included in the grant amount. The county is partnering with the North Central Kansas Planning Commission with, which is experienced in the administration of CDBG funds. The only impact to county funding may be staff time necessary to manage the project. And we're open for any questions, and I brought some.
Couple question now. Who would we pay $33,000 to inspect this?
I'm sorry, what?
Who would we pay $33,000 to inspect this construction? You have construction inspection of $33,000.
Johnny's gonna come up and explain.
Okay.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
John Adam from A+ Architects. Myself and my engineers would be overseeing the project during the construction admin portion.
So that's not part of your architectural services?
It is. It's, the way I separate it, I got the design services and then I have the construction admin, project management.
So your portion of it is 86,000 then?
That and my engineer's correct.
How much architectural work goes into designing a parking lot?
Quite a bit. Most of it's gonna be engineering. Civil engineering primarily, especially with the parking. I don't have structural engineers.
And the people that lay the concrete don't do that?
They have no engineering services. It's gotta be designed. They don't design.
Okay.
Quick question on that issue is where part of this, sometimes it says that your civil engineering is included in it and some places it says that it's not included in it. Is your civil engineering fee, the design of this whole project included in your?
Correct. The only thing that's not is the survey, which when we did the, the, the south access drive, we had Schwab Eaton do part of the survey, which they kinda did a site survey. But the site survey is gonna get more in-depth when we do this because now we're focusing on a different part of the project. So that's not included, but all the civil engineering, design work, the mechanical, electrical, structural engineering, and my services.
Okay, how, and I just, quick question here. How can the civil engineering even start without a survey?
Well, the survey's gonna have to be done first.
And that's not included in this?
Correct. They can still do the design because they have the preliminary layout of what we're, the scope of work is still not completely defined, but the generally it is, if that makes sense. They know that footprint where we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, but I mean, to sit here and think that, okay, I have a footprint. I can look down straight at it off of digital photography or whatever, or even site plan. I can look straight down at it and determine, okay, I need, here's where I want a drive coming in, and here's where I want to go, and here's how many parking spots I want to make. But to make sure that it's all gonna drain properly, drain to the right location, all this, somebody has to have a...
Correct. They can, they can start the process of the design and the survey will come also because generally what, part of my fee is to organize all these folks to make sure it's all coordinated. So when one aspect is done, the other, other aspect will finish it up.
Okay, and then when you say that your deal here and you have this project construction administration, but for 5% of construction cost, but some in here somewhere, it relieves you of all really, you're not liable for any causes or any mishaps or anything?
I'm not sure about that.
Mike Maitya did approve his contract.
Okay.
He did review and approve.
Okay. So getting back to the survey, who, who does the survey and who pays for that then?
That will come out of the county's, or either Rosie's funds or...
Donation dollars.
Do you have a guesstimate of possible fees for survey?
I'm guessing maybe 2,500 to 3,000, depending on how depth it gets, but I don't, I wouldn't suspect it'd be that much more, but it could be. I can't, I can't guess what their fees are gonna be just by normally working with those folks. I kinda have an idea.
And, and we do have, I mean, for this to all come down to the whole situation where we have a certain percentage of the construction fee, and let's set back and, and the percentage of this here is on a certain amount here that we have established in this document. And that includes the grant funds that you might get. It's not even determined if you're gonna get that or not.
Oh, on the CGP side, yes.
So, and none of this even happens if that doesn't, you go get that.
Correct.
But on top of this, this, this here construction fee here, it's kind of different because the, the percentage of that construction fee does not include the total amount. It just includes the remaining after the $200,000. So who's gonna pay for that difference?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, what, what happens here is like the parking, here in your, in this document here, it says the parking, lighting, walkways, and roof. And, and I've got a little bit of information yesterday on this, but I just wanna ask you, is that, it says 647,500 and 8% of that is, is the funding here? But if, if that is minus the 200,000, are you, do you understand? I mean, let's set back, the total cost of this whole project is a million dollars. And, and you've already got in here that we're kind of approving this amount here? Are you gonna come back and then say, oh, hey, this is 8% of the total cost?
No, it's, it's based off of our contract that we have, whatever that cost is. So if the project is a million, whatever, over, I'm just speculating, I'm not gonna come back and say, well, I need more money.
Oh, okay, well, and that's what I was kind of, not, the way this is, it's kinda, I'm going, is that a possibility? That's not gonna...
Well, it's always a possibility because the project hasn't been designed. I don't know what my engineer's gonna charge. I'm not going, not exactly sure what construction materials cost because everything goes up.
Yes.
So the, the price when I did this, this contract is based off of, this is what my contractors are telling me it should cost for materials and labor to do this project. And that's how I built everything, the cost estimate for the par and the contract, based off of their real numbers.
Okay, and Rosie, when will you find out whether we get this or not?
Their turnaround time's been pretty quick, so probably at about a month.
Okay, that's good.
So Rosie, you're applying for 712,460 to grant, right?
Yes.
Okay, the 220, or the quarter of a million, 225,000 other funds, where is, where is that coming from?
We have applied for 200,000 in the CIP funds that we already have awarded to us from past years. And then we have a grant that we received from the Earl Bain Foundation for 15,000. And then we're planning on using $10,000 in donations.
Well, it's an expensive project, but it is needed.
Oh, got it.
The need is definitely there.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just a lot of money.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Is there any questions or comments from the public? Any further ones from the commission? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 25-2427. Resolution 25-2428, approve the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, approve the contract with A+ Architectural, and authorize the chair to sign documents necessary to complete the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, adopt Resolution 25-2427 and Resolution 25-2428. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. Chair, I guess I should have backed up. Can you, can we approve two resolutions in one motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think it's clear you had the numbers in the resolution and that, unless the clerk sees it differently, I think that's a valid motion. It's all related to a single topic.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
Bid award for 2025 asphalt paving, milling, and aggregate shoulder with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So yeah, so we opened bids on June 2nd at 11:00 and received one bid from APEC Kansas for, yeah, so this is for asphalt overlay, milling, and then aggregate shoulder construction. So since I've been here, we only get the one bid, you know, from the local asphalt contractor, so this is pretty typical. You should have a, in your packet, a map of the project and the bid tabs. And so this year, you know, our, our project is going to overlay Burma Road from Smolins South to Salem'sburg through the curves. In those, the curves at Salem'sburg, which is a, it's a correction line, that's why we have the, the reverse curve through there. We're gonna try to do some work to, to help with the super elevation, you know, through there. And so hopefully we can make that a little bit safer, safer ride through those curves. So as we've done every year, the asphalt work must be completed by November 1st, but you know, we don't allow any work during wheat harvest activities, you know, so, which is gonna be about another week to two weeks. So that shouldn't be a problem for this year. All terms for action would be to accept a bid as indicated in the staff recommendation or to reject the bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the bid from APEC Kansas for the amount of estimated work to equal 863,129.90. And so this is actually a 3.6% reduction from last year's prices. You know, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure why that is, but I'm not gonna argue about it, so we don't get that very often. As far as the budget impacts, so funds for this project will be taken from the budgeted line item contractual asphalt work. This line has a current balance of 2.6 million. However, of that 2.6, we always try to leave about 300,000 in that line item for a cash carryover to next year's budget. And so really, I'm only working with about 2.3 million in that line item. So with the, the 2.3 that's available for me to use, we've already allocated about 1.8 million, and that was with our crack seal and our chip seal, and so that's leaving us about 500,000 left available. So in order to fully fund our asphalt maintenance program, I'm requesting to use 400,000 out of our 127 account, which is our special highway improvements. Of that 400, 202,281.29 would be coming from our federal fund exchange program. And that's, that money, we've, we've been, the commission has been allowing me to use that every year. You know, so it's about an extra 200,000 out of that account. And then in addition to that, I'm also requesting to use this year's allocation to our 440 account. And that account is our landfill impact fund, and the allocation this year coming from the city is 249,770.44. And, and really what this does too, this will allow enough money to have our shouldering project at the end of the year. We usually wait until after the fall crops have been harvested to kinda see what kind of a shoulder drop-off we have. And that way, we, we've got a good idea of, you know, the locations for our shouldering projects. The 127 account has a current unencumbered balance of a little over 2.7 million, and our landfill impact fee fund has a balance of about 850,000. Any questions?
Justin, on that landfill money that you're getting from the city, what was it in the past used for?
So as far as the agreement with the city on that account, there is no requirement that that money has to be used for any, you know, specific location, okay? So it's, we can spend it wherever we want to. However, my office, we try to use that on roads that lead to the landfill. You know, so that's Burma, Waterwell, you know, Crawford east of, or sorry, west of Salina. So those are the areas we try to use that money for because that's really what's, what's the intent, is to help maintain those roads leading to the landfill.
That was my question. So that money is, is actually earmarked to help maintain roads and stuff like that? I'm wondering how come your department got that money and how come it didn't, you know, how come we didn't see it back at the county funds where...
In the general fund?
In the general fund itself.
I do, I do know the answer to that, I think, but, because it was the impact of all the trash trucks going to the landfill is why they added it on there, yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And you talked a little bit about some road, working on those curves?
Yes.
What, I mean, is that, that's not in this bid. That is something the county will do?
No, that is in this bid.
Oh.
So yeah, so when you're, when you have a curve, especially when the tighter the curve, the usually, the, the more it gets. So the, the low side of the curve usually gets steeper than when it was really originally constructed, and the high side will get flatter. I don't know why that is. That's just kinda how it always kinda happens. And so what we're gonna do with this project here is we're gonna have APEC go through and put on a, it's not really a leveling course, but the high side of the curves, we're actually gonna put more super elevation than what's there now, trying to get it back to where we want it. So they'll come through and put a lift to try to get that, the slope, the super elevation slope that we want, and then they'll come back and they'll overlay everything. And so it'll, it'll, it should provide a, a little safer curve through there. We're gonna keep at the same speed limit. But right now, we have what's, we got areas what's, it's called negative super elevation. You know, instead of having it banked as you're going around, you gotta think of a racetrack, you know, the whole thing's banked so you can maintain that speed. It's actually reverse. It's going the other direction, so, which is definitely a negative thing.
Okay.
So this won't entail any road closings, just be probably one-way flagging?
Yeah, yep, it'll, we'll, we'll do, when not flagged, they'll have to run a pilot car, pilot car operation. So again, because we're not reconstructing anything. It's just how we put the asphalt on the road.
They're not gonna mill any of this level type of thing?
Nope, nope. There is some milling on this project, you know, so the, the north end is tying into Smolins Road. You know, so, because we overlaid Burma from K-140 South to Smolins a couple of years ago. And so we're gonna pick up, you know, the, that overlay at Smolins and Burma intersection and go south. But through Smolins, there's some pretty significant drop-offs, especially on the, I shouldn't say drop-offs, but really steep slopes. Once you get past the shoulders, I am gonna mill through that area, really all through the, the community of Smolins, just so we don't elevate the road anymore, which will, you know, just cause more of a, a steeper slope through there. So I'm gonna mill through there.
Okay.
But that's, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions by, by the commission? Anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA 2025-78 as presented.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-78 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Justin, before you leave, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, getting one week ahead of myself here.
Okay.
I thought the shilling thing was this week, but I've got just one quick question. Remind me what we did on Waterwell to, to stop that dust problem by the landfill?
Oh, we, we overlaid it. I mean, we, yeah, we, we converted, you know, from a gravel surface road to an asphalt paved road.
Do you remember the cost?
I knew you were gonna ask.
Okay. Well, I'm a week ahead. I'm a week ahead, so I apologize.
No, sure. I, I could get that exact number, but it was, my guess, it was between 900 and a million at that time.
And I just wanna comment on that because I, I think first what we did, we, that you did, not we, but you, you had a chip and seal on that first before you overlaid it.
No, no, we did not.
No, that's a, that's on, I know which road you're talking about.
You talking about Waterwell?
That's East Waterwell.
That's East Waterwell.
East Waterwell, yeah.
Oh, you didn't say...
Yeah, I'm talking about the landfill. I'm sorry.
Oh, going your, okay.
Yeah, right.
Well, when you said the dust fell and the, I thought you meant the land institute.
Yeah, what you're talking about is Waterwell from the Smolins River Bridge to Simpson.
My mistake.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, and I do have, yeah, I will be bringing the shilling road request for action next week so we can have an in-depth conversation about, about that.
Very good. Thank you. I'm sorry to keep you there.
No, you're good.
Will that include traffic count?
On that road, it can. Yeah, yeah, I think we've got a, a... Yeah, yeah, it's, I think we've, we've got a recent traffic count. If not, we can put the traffic counts out there on that road.
That's a good point.
I'd have to see. Okay. Thank you.
Next item?
Grant awards for Rural Fire District Number One with Wade Waddell, Rural Fire District Assistant Fire Chief.
Morning.
Good morning, Wade.
Rural Fire District Number One is requesting commission approval to accept the following three grants. Dane Hansen Foundation, the amount of $15,000. TC Energy, in the amount of $15,000. And Earl Bain Foundation, in the amount of $5,000. Grant application was sent to multiple foundations, asking for support to build a six-by-six UTV for wildland fire suppression to be used in conjunction with Celine County and Dixon County Wildland Task Forces, which we are members of both. Total expected cost for the project is $53,000. Other funding awards are expected in the future, along with the funds that we had already in the RFD1 donation account. Alternatives for action, allow RFD1 to accept the grant funding from all three of the foundations and/or do not allow us to accept the grant funds. We recommend that you do. Do you have any questions on the project or anything like that?
Who wrote the grants? You did?
That's why I'm here.
Okay. Congratulations. I tell you what, I, I can't say enough of, you know, for you folks going out, taking the initiative to try to get, you know, funding and stuff like that and help with the, you know, different things that you need. So, congratulations. I think that's, I think it's fantastic.
I missed more than I hit, but there's still some that have not responded. So, forestry service used to be good for stuff, we're not really sure about this year. And then, some other ones that take three to six months. So, I'm, I'm very close to the finish line, along with some, some private people that are willing to step up if I get, get very near the finish line. But I'm, I'm very close, and, and none of this will come from our general or special equipment fund. So, this was something that we wanted to be able to take statewide if necessary. There's, some of our trucks are, I mean, the one that I drive is about 56 years old at this point. It's not, it's good, it's good in district, but it doesn't need to be outrunning the interstate to, to go to a different county.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
And just a quick question, Wade, is that what size of water tank can you put on this?
I'm looking from 60 to 70. I'm down to, to two vendors that I've, that, that will answer me and, and, and help me. But on top of the water, there's, there's going to be a place for a, basically for us to recover a down firefighter and an AD med kit. We've had some guys go down on these fires that are super remote, and we need a way to get them back to a road to an ambulance as quickly as possible. So, there's, I'm trying to put multiple things on, on one unit and, and make it available to, to go to these big fires and, and join the team. Because, because someday, we're going to have one in district, and we're going to want them to, to come help us, so.
You bet. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, bring you back to the commission for action?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RFA 2025-81 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-81 as presented. All in favors, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Virtual environment refresh with Lauren Humphrey, Director of Information Technology.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys. Celine County Information Technology is requesting the commission to approve a purchase of a new virtual server environment. The project was awarded $151,000 in grant funding through the Kansas State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. Our request is to purchase the following equipment to replace our existing, existing environment, which is six physical servers, four data center switches, and one storage array. The alternative actions is, for the Celine County Technology Department has approached Eagle Technologies and SHI for quotes on this project. Both vendors have quoted us for, through the state of Kansas contracts. We have four different options. They're a bit long, so the differences in these options are just the switching types. But option one for $154,804. Option two would be for $149,7487. Option three would be for $176,193.93. And option four would be for $194,432. The IT staff recommends purchasing the HPE Host Dell switches and the Nimble storage array from Eagle Technologies for $149,7487. The equipment would be purchased from the equipment reserve funds and then reimbursed from the, by the state of Kansas Local Cyber Security Grant Program. So, there's no real impact on the county budget. In addition, these quotes do consist of five years of maintenance on them. So, for the next five years, we won't have to pay maintenance on these equipments like we do now. Is there any questions?
Your recommendation is which option now?
It would be option-
Two.
Be option two.
Okay.
The switches are just different, some are higher end, some are mid-grade.
What are we now paying for that existing maintenance agreement?
We're roughly around about $15,000, $16,000 for maintenance per year for a host, or three hosts and a nimble. But this, this will take that away, plus we're going to be replacing some stuff at our DR site as well. So, that maintenance for those items will go away as well.
But then, in five years, we'll-
In five years, it's, is a hope that we could come back to you and, and get another environment with the same kind of setup, where it's all kind of paid for over a five-year period. So, we're trying to build in these maintenance programs with the purchases, so that we don't have to continue to try to manage this over. And those things kind of raise every single year. And so, we're really trying to build it in with the quotes.
And this is service on the switches and the servers? Everything?
Uh, yeah, so, our, our server environment contains about 28 servers in it, and it's virtualized, so we have three physical hosts and one storage unit that actually contains all of that. And then, we send some of that out to our DR site, which is a bunch of backups. And so, we're trying to almost replace both of those, is what we're trying to do.
All right. Any other comments or questions by the commission? Anyone from the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2025-84, option number two, as presented.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-84 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Changes to commission meeting schedule for summer with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, before you is a potential amendment to the resolution setting meeting dates for the calendar year 2025. We had a discussion last week at your work session meeting about the fact that there's some upcoming vacations and other things, change in state law with regard to the budget that just make us think it might be a good idea to realign some of the meeting dates. So, essentially, we would flip-flop the scheduled study session and the scheduled canceled meeting. So, the study session would now occur on June 24th and the canceled meeting on July 8th, opposite of what they're currently scheduled for. And then, in August, we would rearrange the meetings. So, we would meet on the 12th, but not the 26th. We would meet on a Tuesday rather than a Thursday, and then, we would wait until September to adopt the budget. So, those are the recommended changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Would recommend that your commission adopt amendment number one to Resolution 24-2414.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the commission? Anyone from the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt amendment number one to Resolution 24-2414 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution dash 2414, 24-2414. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item?
Final ARPA task order with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So, as the commission is aware, we have, for more than four years now, been at this process of spending $10.5 million that the federal government gifted us as part of the fourth COVID stimulus package. And as part of that process, we have engaged with a firm called iParametrics to do a lot of the compliance work, dealing with federal money is, comes with a whole set of rules, several of which have changed in the middle of this process at various points. So, we have entered into a contract with iParametrics back in 2021. Provides for their total contract amount to be set by these various task orders. We have previously set five tasks order, five task orders in an amount of about $413,000. The money for that has essentially been exhausted. There's about $900 left. So, there are just a few remaining projects that need to be buttoned up. All the money, of course, was obligated by December 31st, but there's still some things that, that need to be resolved. One of those is a, a project where there's some unspent money that allows us to repurpose to do a sixth task order. Say that five times fast. And so, iParametrics estimates spending just under $21,000 from this point to finish everything up. So, the requested task order is in the amount of $20,015, of which $12,527.77 would come from cancellation of that one remaining project. $1,492.19 would come from interest that remains in the ARPA fund. And then, that would total $14,000 and some change. The other $5994 would not be spent until written approval from the county, because we would need to figure out which other project we could take money from to finalize that. So, the recommendation before the commission today is to approve task order six, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Help me out here. What is task order number six?
So, task order number six is an amount of work equal to $20,015.
So far, unnamed. We don't know what that work is.
Well, it's to help us finalize those projects and do any end-
It's-
-reporting and all the stuff they've been doing.
Goes back then, it's payments to iParamet-
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing then, I'll bring you back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2025-83 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-83 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into informational items.
Road petition for a portion of Niles Road.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You know, this is a, a road petition for a portion of Niles Road in the southwest portion of our county. Just to show you right here, that don't work. But anyways, this is close to the community of Gibson and southeast of Celine School. And then, this shows you a little bit of where it acts, but it's actually from the half-mile line there, going south to that closed bridge. There are some property owners that are requesting a minimum maintenance gated access facility. This request is for controlled access on a section of roadway that is currently a gravel classified road. This section of roadway in the southwest portion of the county is not a through road. There is a closed bridge approximately 1,500 feet north of Hedberg Road. The petitioners, William Crawford, Sean Knowles, and Lisa Green, are requesting need for a controlled access facility. They are the owners of all property lying within the requested area. It has become a dumping ground for trash, and they are requesting a gated access to their property to alleviate the situation and prevent unwanted trespassers. A strip of land, a strip of road right of way, 40 feet in width, 20 feet each side of the section line located on the east line of Section 12, Township 16 South, Range 2 West, and the west line of Section 7, Township 16 South, Range 1 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Celine County, Kansas. The center line of which is more particularly described as beginning at the east quarter corner of said Section 12 and the west quarter corner of said Section 7, then south following the existing roadway on the section line for a distance of 900 feet, then continue on the existing roadway on a tangent curve to the left with a length of 154 and 15 hundredths feet, a radius of 900 feet, and a cord length of 153 and 97 hundredths feet. The attached road petition has been reviewed by the Road and Bridge Department. The petitioners have been advised that if approved, the adjoining property owners would pay for the initial cost of the gate installation. Upon completion of the installation of the gate, the county will provide locks and any future maintenance needs. Discussion of the issue is allow the petitioners to gate the roadway. This would have some budget impact in the continued maintenance of the gate, which is expected to be offset by less greater maintenance and trash pickups. Two, do not allow the petitioners to gate the roadway. Owners will continue to deal with trash and trespassers. And it's similar to the one up on Audger Road. I'm looking for a consensus of the board, if it's the consensus of the board to move forward with this, engineering is going to fly the property with the drone, such as we did with Audger Road, and set in motion, you know, the resolution and those other processes.
That vacated bridge you were talking about, or the, or the bridge that is, what happened? That's on the same road, right?
Yes. It was an old wooden structure that did not allow, it just broke, it got old, and-
So, under, well, I guess what I'm trying to get at being minimum maintenance, if anything, if that bridge decides to completely-
It isn't, it is not there anymore.
Not there anymore, okay.
Correct.
That's okay, thank you.
Yes.
This makes sense to me.
Yeah. One, one thing I would suggest personally, I, I would like to see the drone fly over at this stage of the presentation, rather than when you bring it back for action.
And, and we did try to get that done for this, Mr. Wees, but some staffing issues with engineering.
All right, thank, I know, I want to say that was very helpful.
It was very helpful.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to say, I apologize for not getting out to see, visually see this. But my question, question right now is, is that coming from the north, coming down to that, if the greater operator has to still maintain that road to that point right there, do we have a, he's able to turn around right there in that road?
Yes, yes. It's a, basically, in effect, a minimum maintenance road now.
Okay.
I mean, he's not going down there very often, you know, we mow it and things like that, but it's, it's a lesser maintained road.
Gotcha. Okay. And that is a homestead on the south side of that river?
Yes, yes.
So that road going up to that is being maintained by?
Yes.
Another, okay. Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Commissioners' comments.
I don't know if this is open in a can of worms, but I had some question, or I have a question, I guess, for Phil to see what his reaction is or whatever, he thinks we can do. What would it take for Slayne County to implement a plastic bag ban for the county, for countywide? Plastic bags, it's getting out of hand, you know. I know that the ditches in the county, out by the landfill, I mean, it's awful looking out there, and most, probably, I'd say seventy-five to eighty percent of it is plastic bags on the fence, plastic bags everywhere. I know that, you know, I approached this with the city years ago, and I know that the, it was also brought up with, you know, with the governor and with, you know, some stuff that was in through there, and it's actually, if I understand right, it's, you know, it's, right now, it's open to whatever the, you know, the counties want it to do. I know that Lawrence has got a plastic bag ban, there's several other communities that are either looking or hasn't, and I just didn't know what our options was, or how in-depth would it be for us to take a look at something like that?
Well, I'll say that is not something I have ever researched, so I would need to take a look at our options, but the first thing that comes to mind is I think we would want to do something cooperatively with the city of Salina. You know, the, obviously, they run the landfill and so forth, and most of the larger generators of plastic bags are located within the city, so, you know, I think we'd probably start with a discussion with them, but, yeah, I mean, I can certainly look into that.
I'm trying to think of, in the county, where, who is generating the use of these plastic bags that we would want to ban? I don't know.
People in the city that are part of the county.
People in the city, I mean, if the city's still part of the county, and then, you know...
Oh, so you, and we, but wouldn't they home rule, or would have?
That's why I said I think we'd want to do something cooperatively with them. I, I think it's probably a... I would say it's similar to the, people will hate this analogy, but I would say it's similar to the conversation around the mask mandate, right? Because it's, you're really sort of adopting this under your public health rules, like the reason to ban plastic bags is because you're trying to protect the health of the environment around the community. And so, you know, it was dicey, I will say, at the, when we went through that, the extent to which our authority extended into the city limits, and so, again, I think it's probably one of those things that we would want to do in cooperation with them.
Well, on a less serious note, I was on the radio twice this last week to talk about the budget, once last Tuesday, or Wednesday, and then Saturday morning. Trying to get input on the budget before we set the mill levy, which is always frustrating. Most of the conversation, or the most interesting part of the conversation was probably that neither of the radio stations knew that thirty-six percent of the property in Slayne County is not taxed. And because we actually have to pay our bills, that puts a lot of pressure on the other sixty-four. So, I, because that's, they said, they asked what the biggest challenge was, and I just said, I think that's gonna be the biggest challenge going forward, I don't necessarily have an answer. You know, this is state statute that nonprofits don't have to pay property taxes, but just an understanding of why this is so hard for us. So, I haven't had any comments. And Commissioner Wees said you haven't had any comments?
I have not had any.
So we're headed down that same road again, and, you know, it'll be full the day that we set the mill levy, but it's a done deal since then, and that's kind of what I kind of said is, we talked about the process too, that, you know, the groups come forward and ask what we want, the departments ask for what they want, next step is the administrator brings a preliminary budget to us, and then we discuss, so. I don't know. We'll see what happens. I'm willing to do it again, but I'm not so sure if it'll help, so. And I think you did a newspaper.
Yes.
Really nice picture, by the way.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
And I got another lighter note even than that, I know Commissioner Wees said something a couple of weeks or a week ago. I was out by the Brookville Fire Station. Good news is, it looks like the walls are starting to get ready to go up. I talked to the contractor out there, and of course, with, you know, the rain that they've had out that way has kind of put a damper on a bunch of things that are getting done, but it looks like now that they're moving right along with the, you know, all the utilities and stuff are in and ready to go, so it looks like the walls are getting ready to go up, and it won't be too long before we'll have walls and roof on the place.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Next.
Announcements.
I did have one announcement this morning. We received a letter, provided a copy to each of the commissioners, from the Salina Airport Authority, and they're requesting both the county and the city commissions to write letters of support for the emergency air service program, or actually, I guess it would be letters of opposition to cuts to the emergency or essential air service communities. And the gist of the letter is those cuts would not directly affect air service into Salina, but they would affect sort of what they're trying to build out there with the overnight maintenance and those sorts of things that we contributed money to and the city contributed money to. So, I'm assuming the commission would be willing to support something like that, so we will try and get a letter in front of you, hopefully next Tuesday for your review, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, since just got that letter yesterday.
Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none. Any, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion for adjournment and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.